Thank you. With that, we do have an agenda in front of us. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda items?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as posted.
Second.
Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And that motion, you know, carries. We've approved the agenda and consent agenda. So first up under our approved agenda is public recognitions and presentations. The Lacy Youth Council report. Let's see youth council come in.
Hi, I'm Nathan Miller from Pope John Paul II High School. I'm a senior. And this is what we have going on at our school or recent events. Two students have qualified for the National Merit Scholarship who are also in attendance today. We'll hear more about that later. Our fall, our fall sports season recently ended. Our girls volleyball team won the C Tackle League Championship and they almost made it to state, which is the best that they've done so far. The cross-country girls team won for their third consecutive state championship. And the boys cross-country team got second for their fourth consecutive state championship. Winter sports started, boys and girls basketball and cheerleading are those sports. Our knowledgeable teams had our first competition today and we, two of our teams got second place, or two of our teams got first place in their respective flights. And then in the championship flight, we got second place. FBLA had their first conference last week. And our NHS chapter inducted 10 new students this week, which I personally find to be impressive considering that the school only has barely over 100 people. And NHS is also running a chili can drive this week. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is, my name is Zuri Ramirez and I am from North Hurson High School. In club news, we have a new club at North Hurson called the Indigenous Native Alliance. Anybody is welcome. It's just you have to have a willingness to talk about topics concerning indigenous, indigenous people in Washington. Some more club news is our robotics team at North Hurson placed second and third. And the Future Business Leaders of America. They recently had a conference at Redwind Casino and we have sent a few students to Denver for the national conference. We are also hosting a charity called the Turkey Drive. A few teachers were nominated and you can donate towards, you can donate towards one of them being dressed up in a turkey outfit. So that's a lot of fun. In sports news, there is the girls volleyball team that has made it to state in, has made it to state in Yakima and, and the winter sports have begun. Our school is performing a play called The Theory of Relativity and that's about it. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Rory Line. I go to Timberline High School. Our robotics team placed six overall so far, winning three matches, which is a great improvement from last year. Last year we had two teams. They both placed last. So that's a huge improvement. They still have two more matches to go until they actually place for state or they don't. All winter sports have started on the 14th and all fall sports ended on the 14th. Our winter sports include boys and girls basketball, bowling, wrestling, boy swim, and gymnastics. We also have our winter warmth project on the 14th of December where we make blankets for homeless people. In other news, we have all our extra doors that have, sorry, that were locked due to our school threat that we had a few weeks ago have now been unlocked. The only bad thing that happened then were, well, was that we were not informed of this threat. We only had to hear it through rumors. But that's it.
Okay. So my name is Alanis Blackburn. I am a senior at River Ridge High School. Before I served here for the city, I was a member of the Principal Advisory Council for the school board. And the Lacy Youth Council has been an amazingly educational experience these past two years to help me develop a deeper understanding of the way our government works, public speaking, and I've also met some great mentors. As a running start student, I don't physically appear at the school too often. I spent most of my high school years online due to COVID and I continue my online experience now taking college classes through South Peaches Sound Community College. However, our bowling team won a game on Tuesday. Our food and blood drives are up and running this week. Our native studies program is awaiting an upcoming conference in Philadelphia and our DECA team is headed to Anaheim, California for a competition. So a lot of exciting events and recent successes within our clubs and sports teams, which is always very exciting. There was also a carnival themed cheerleading comp at Ridge this weekend. I attended as an athlete and I did a great job organizing the event. On another note, our leadership team had very limited funding this year. It hindered their ability to fulfill many of the plans and ideas they had regarding relationships between teachers and students. To me, I feel like that's what's most important, but it's also what we lack the most. Many people within our admin, staff, and even school board have shown time and time again that they prioritize how they are perceived in the public's eye more than they do the mental health and the physical wellbeing of their students. Things like protests at River Ridge in 2022, a shooting at North Hurson in 2015, students being arrested both off and on campus at Salish in 2022, and a suicide attempt in 2017. Keep in mind, students were at lunch and witnessed this happen. This is only a handful of the kinds of situations we have students have been put in while attending the North Hurson Public Schools without any recognition, education, apologies, acknowledgement, or any sort of overall change in policies, their hiring processes, equity trainings, or the way we teach our students how to be empathetic people within a diverse society. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate hearing your guys' update and we'll go up from now up to the John Paul High School and talk about their National Merit Scholarship programs.
Good evening. My name is John Grossman. Our principal, Teresa Allen, would have loved to have been here, but her daughter is having all of her wisdom teeth removed today and she decided to stay there and take care of her daughter, which I think was a really great move. So I have the honor of being here and I really thank the city council first for recognizing our students, giving us this opportunity. And sarcastically, I'd like to say thank you for putting me after the youth council. I'm supposed to follow that. Well done. That was a fantastic presentation by each of you. So I want to take a moment and just embarrass for a moment Bella and Mariah. So would you both please come and stand next to me for a moment? Bella Chandra and Mariah Steinbrucker. They are wonderful examples of the virtues that we try and instill in our young people at JP2. They are well-rounded, spiritually alive people, committed to the service of others, and clearly intellectually strong, which is in our mission statement and what we're here to recognize today. Both of them were named commended students in the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program. It's also worth noting, as Nathan Miller pointed out just a moment ago, they are also part of the JP2 cross-country team that earlier this month won the state championship for the third consecutive year. In fact, Bella and Mariah, standing before you tonight, are two of only a very few runners in the state of Washington in cross-country history to be on three state championships in their high school career. In addition, they are part of the same cross-country team that won the WIAA Academic State Championship Award for achieving the highest grade point average in the girls 1B cross-country classification. I want to thank Isabella, Bella, and Mariah for being exemplary JP2 Eagles. I want to say thank you to their parents who had a little something to do with it along the way and their families. And finally, I want to say thank you to the city council for inviting us and giving us an opportunity to shine a light on a couple of really great students. So thank you very much and thank you to the both of you.
Thank you. If you don't shake the hands of the guys, the people who are there, we'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. We're virtually shaking your hand as well. So next up on our, our agenda is employee recognitions. I'll turn it over to our city manager, Scott Spence.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you. So I have the honor to recognize really the most important asset that we have in terms of the city of Lacey and that is our city employees. And we have a number of employees that have reached major milestones in their service to the city. And I think it's worthy to communicate that to council leadership, but also to share that with the community, that these folks are dedicated to making sure that they provide the highest level of service to the community. And that is really something to be proud of in terms of what we try to do as the city of Lacey. And so we have a slideshow and we would like to talk about those individuals that have met either 20 or plus years with the city of Lacey. And I'm going to have Troy Wu help me with the slides. Okay. So first I want to recognize 20 years of service. First is Rick Walk. He's our Director of Community Economic Development. We also have Cindy Carmichael. She also worked in the Community Economic Development Department, the front counter, doing permit issuance, as well as Leah Bender, also in the Community Economic Development Department. Next slide. Troy, you're doing a fabulous job. The next folks I'd like to recognize, they've also achieved 20 years of service is Roland Saponosa, one of our police officers within the Lacy Police Department, Michelle Mantle, who also works within our utility department that is actually solely responsible for issuing our billing for the city of Lacey. So very dependent on Michelle. Our next employees I'd like to recognize, one is Peter Brooks. He's our Water Resource Manager, makes sure that we have the cleanest and meet all the federal standards for our clean drinking water. Kelly Moon is our Executive Assistant within our Public Works Department. Also like to recognize Brian Gugamas. He takes care of our city fleet. We have well over 200 vehicles with our city fleet as also, as well as special equipment. Justin Bellis is our Senior Water Distribution Technician in our Public Works Department, also for 20 years of service. Eric Curry is our Senior Electrical Technician. So if ever have a stip or signal that is out in our community, that is the person that is affecting or actually correcting or addressing that issue. We also have Kevin Guba, which is our Journey Level Maintenance Technician in Stormwater, very important. And Kevin Coles is the person that inspects all of our public works projects that we actually do within the city, also in the Public Works Department. Now for 25 years of service, Shannon Barnes, a sergeant in our Lacy Police Department. We also have Keith Mercer in our Police Department and also Mike Albers, another police officer that has reached 25 years of service within the Police Department. 25 years of service for these individuals also include Eric Mickelson, our Journey Level Maintenance Technician in our wastewater. Tom Palmitier, who recently retired, but was our Management Analyst within the Public Works Department. And then Chris Baird, who actually takes care of all of our facilities within the Lacy, City of Lacey, also in the Public Works Department. Also celebrating 25 years of service with the city of Lacey is Ty Carney, one of our Building Code Specialists in our Community and Economic Development Department. And Deanna Johnson, who works in our IS Department, who is phenomenal to solve all those computer problems that we have as employees. So I see Deanna in the audience, so thank you, Deanna. In 30 years, that's three decades, if I have the math correctly. So that is a So that is a very special contribution into the city of Lacey. And Violet Clergey at Clergey has, I got it right this time. Has committed thirty years of service to the city of Lacey, and she's within our Finance Department. So again, a special contribution to a recognition of Violet. And thirty years also, uh, for Sue Phalish, who is our Recreation Manager in our Parks and Culture and Recreation Department. So again, can't say enough about the longevity. That is not, not necessarily unheard of, but it is a unique to the city of Lacey of our long-tenured employees. Jim Mack, which is a Commander in our Police Department, also celebrates thirty years of service, um, with the city of Lacey. So thank you, Mac, for his service. We also have Dennis Mertens, who, um, retired last year, but he also spent thirty years of service with the city of Lacey, um, and actually issued all of our right-of-way permits for Public Works Department. We also have, uh, Chris Mills, thirty years of service. He's our Journey Level Ma- Maintenance Technician in our Water Department. Fun fact, we have two billions of gallons of water that we annually produce each year. That's a, that's a lot of water. And then Ed Poclay also celebrates thirty years of service with the city. Um, and he also does inspection for all the private development that occurs within our community. And special recognition really goes to Phil Petty. Thirty-five years of service with the city of Lacey. That's pretty incredible when you think of what Phil has personally seen in terms of the growth of the city, the size of the organization. Uh, so we owe a debt of gratitude to Phil. And so I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you for your service to the city of Lacey. I know some of you in the audience, if you wouldn't mind coming up, we'd love to personally thank you if you would like to do that.
Thank you. It's a long time.
We should, this is an order of service.
Well, congratulations, uh, to y'all. Uh, I think that means that you guys are, are pretty old, because you guys have been around for a long time. But, uh, thank you so much for giving back to the city of Lacey and being an amazing public servants. We, uh, really appreciate it. You know, we can't do it without you. So, uh, next up on our agenda is a public comment. I'll turn it over to Scott. Do we have any, anyone there who signed up for public comment?
We have one person that's signed up, James Andrew Lee, if, uh, James would like to come to the podium. Perfect.
And also, uh, public speaking is not my forte, so bear with me. All right. City Council members, my name is James Lee. I have attached and highlighted, uh, the articles that will be referenced for your review. My family moved to Lacey in March of two thousand twenty. Since we moved into our home, we have been dealing with a feral cat colony that our next-door neighbor feeds. Our neighbor's actions have directly led to property damage of our home, yard, and vehicles. To clarify, the number of cats in this colony is well over twenty. I'm not, we're not talking about five or six cats. I, as well as many other neighbors, have attempted to help the next-door neighbor. We have offered assistance in trapping and transporting animals to be spayed, neutered, and rehomed. Unfortunately, we've been met with, uh, resistance at best and hostility at worst. As of last week, I contacted Animal Services again after seeing cat scratches on the hood of our new car. An Animal Services Officer is now able to help us with their new trap and release program. The Joint Animal Services Director, in a recent article in the Olympian, stated, quote, "Those that make it through the program return to their territory, not as mere strays, but as newly labeled 'community cats,' end quote. This may prove to be a long-term solution for, uh, helping well-intentioned people reduce the number of cats in their community. Unfortunately, this program does not take in immediate concerns for property, environmental damage, or the feral cats suffering into consideration." An article published by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission stated, quote, "Animal behavior experts note that feral and free-ranging outdoor ant cats will hunt and kill even if they're well-fed, and make them a major threat to native wildlife. Unlike wild predators that switch to other prey or locations when food becomes scarce, domestic cats that are fed can afford to continue to hunt and kill prey even when populations decline," end quote. With this taken into consideration, I wanted to educate myself further, um, with an opposing view. So I searched for PETA's official stance. I figured that would be a well-balanced way to handle that. PETA said, uh, quote, "Sadly, our experience with trap spay, neuter, and release programs and managed feral cat colonies has led them to believe whether or not these programs are in truly in the best interest of the cats. They receive countless reports of incidents of cats, managed or not, suffer to die horrible deaths, and they must fend for themselves outdoors. Having witnessed firsthand gruesome things that can happen to feral cats, PETA cannot, in good conscience, um, advocate trapping and releasing as a humane way to deal with the population," end quote. The last immediate concern I have is with property damage. In the same Olympian article referenced earlier, the Joint Animal Services Director stated that animal service needs local jurisdiction to include definitions for "community cat" and "community cat caregiver" into the codes. Quote, "The way the ordinances were previously written, anybody feeding a cat for fourteen days was considered the owner. Community cat givers really aren't owners. So we want to make sure people are trying to do the right thing. We're not being punished either," end quote. If the city council decides to include definitions for, quote, "community cat caregiver", you would be removing the liability of a person directly causing damage to public and personal property. I'm here today to ask the city council to not only keep the ordinances defining an owner as, quote, "anybody feeding a cat for fourteen days", but to also add measures to discourage the feeding of feral cats, and by extension, the breeding of feral cats. Good intentions are not enough. We must do what's best for our community, the environment, and the animals. Thank you.
Well, we certainly appreciate that. You know, this is, uh, new information to us, and we will make sure it's under advisement, and we'll try to get back to you as well as, uh, what, what decisions we, we make. You know, there's always circumstances that happen outside the, the, what we think is, is what's common within our community. And obviously, this is one of those circumstances. And so we might need to add some language specific to circumstances like what you're experiencing, which is outside the normal, what we would think is, uh, is normal within our community. So, um, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Mi- Mr. Mayor, just quickly, do we have your contact information in the packet that you left? Yeah, we, you have, oh, you have it? Okay. Great. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
We appreciate it, and we'll, we'll make sure we get back to you, um, one way or the other, what, what's going to happen. Joint Animal Services is obviously, uh, under the purview of the city of Lacey, but we, obviously, this is a county-wide issue. So we'll make sure that, um, your experiences are, are, are being noted. We'll refer this, uh, to them and see, see what other recommendations can come out of this, so we appreciate it. So, um, next up on our agenda is a public hearing. It's the, the first of the two thousand twenty-three budget hearings. And so I will open up this public hearing and turn it over to Troy.
Thank you, my writer. Good evening, Council. Give me just a moment here to get my presentation started. All right, well, welcome to the first budget hearing on the just general, uh, general budget. You did conduct, excuse me, you did conduct your revenue hearing two weeks ago on November third. Um, you will connect, uh, conduct another public hearing on the first of December, and you are scheduled to adopt your budget on December fifteenth. Uh, the purpose of tonight's meeting is, of course, to accept comments from the public, but also to receive any direction from you, the council, as to any changes you would like to see in the proposed budget before you adopt it. So I'll try to be brief. You had a really nice presentation from the city manager on October twentieth, but I would like to review some of the numbers. Um, the numbers have slightly changed in the general fund, uh, just about by about forty thousand dollars. But you could see that the total proposed budget for two thousand twenty-three is one hundred and seventy-eight million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. This is a decrease of almost sixteen point nine million dollars. Um, in terms of, you know, we're, we're dealing with inflationary pressures across the budget. Um, but in general, uh, the decreases are related to lower capital improvement programs, uh, less equipment purchases, and the associated use of, uh, reserves and transfers to fund those projects. Here's just a little bit different way of looking at the budget. Um, you can really see here the impact of the utility funds. Um, it's just under fifty percent of our entire budget, uh, coming in at eighty-eight point seven million dollars. I would like to point out that we are spending about twenty point one million dollars in capital projects. It's really a reflection of what this budget does to invest back into our community, so I think that's pretty significant. I would like to focus in on the general fund. Uh, the general fund, of course, is the section of the budget I think our citizens most identify with. Uh, this is how we pay for law enforcement, our streets, parks and recreation, administrative functions such as the council and city manager. So here is your total general fund budget being proposed for two thousand twenty-three, coming in at about sixty point seven million dollars, a decrease of about six point four million dollars. Um, overall, this is a nine point six percent decrease. Would like to highlight a few of the more significant variances. Uh, the first I'd like to point out is administration and finance. I kind of want to combine my comments here. Fairly significant percentage increases, not really in terms of dollars. But really, I just wanted to take the, the moment to, uh, thank the city manager and city council for their support of these administrative functions within the city. These are, you know, a couple of our main support functions within the city for the rest of our employees. Um, if you think about what's happened in the last six or seven years, we've added about eighty full-time employee equivalents. Um, and that's where a lot of this support becomes necessary in terms of payroll functions, in terms of human resources. So, um, again, thank you for that support. Um, I would like to spend a little bit of time on social services. Uh, you know, we have a decrease here of about six hundred and four thousand dollars, uh, thirty-four point six percent decrease. Uh, but I'd like to say that this is not a reflection of our commitment to social services within this budget. Uh, the main differences have occurred because of one-time expenditures that occurred in two thousand twenty-two. Um, we had a, a two-year catch-up of our, uh, expenditures, our, our commitment to the Regional Housing, uh, Council in terms of affordable and supportive housing. That was about a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar, uh, one-time. Well, it will continue in two thousand twenty-three, but as a one-time catch-up in two thousand twenty-two. Um, we also had, uh, the final expenditures for the improvements that were made at the Veteran Services Hub. So those are, again, one-time expenditures, again, not a reflection of our commitment to social services. Uh, kind of similar comments in terms of, uh, police or law enforcement, showing, uh, about a million-dollar decrease, six point two percent. Again, this is not a reflection of our commitment to public safety. Uh, this is really due, again, to one-time expenditures that occurred in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the most significant being a one point six million dollar transfer for the design and land acquisition for the new police station. So again, this is not a reflection of a decreasing service to the public. Um, Public Works, um, we have a, uh, almost a seven hundred thousand dollar increase. Uh, this is really related to this department becoming more fully staffed. Um, across the city functions, we have had, uh, numerous, uh, vacancies in terms of turnover of employees. Um, there have been workforce challenges in terms of, uh, trying to find those replacements. Uh, but we did have two additional positions in the, uh, budget for Public Works. But again, this is primarily a catch-up and, uh, filling of those vacant positions. And the final section of the general fund I would like to focus on is capital and transfers. And as I stated earlier, there, the, in general, the decreases to our budget are related to one-time capital and the associated transfers and use of one-time cash or reserves to fund those. So you're seeing about a five point nine million dollar decrease, um, within capitals and transfers. Uh, I would like to spend a couple moments on general fund revenues. Of course, you conducted your revenue hearing a couple weeks ago, so I'll try to be brief. We, of course, have to have a balanced budget, so you could see here for the general fund, we have, we do indeed have a, a balanced budget, so about sixty point seven million dollars of revenue is identified, decrease of six point four million dollars. Um, really here, you could see the first four categories are all tax categories. You could see significant increases. Um, again, this really isn't an indication that the economy is, is growing, uh, by these leaps and bounds. It's more of the projections or the budgeted amounts catching up with reality and what's happening out there, um, in the economy. I do want to point out a couple of changes from the published budget and the city manager's presentation back in October. Property tax, we have a very slight decrease. Um, it's just about three hundred and fifty dollar decrease. Um, you know, we'll, we'll talk about some of those details in some later slides, as well as, uh, the actions that will be asked of you later this evening. Um, and we do have about four different changes for the proposed budget. And, uh, like I said, it's about a forty thousand dollar increase, and those are primarily being funded by, um, reserves there, and you could see that in the all-other category. Um, same information in graphic form. You know, I stated during the revenue hearing, about sixty percent of our, uh, revenues in the general fund come from taxes. Uh, somewhere around twenty percent come from user fees. Do you just want to spend a moment on property tax? Again, you, we do have a change or a decrease to the general levy projection for two thousand twenty-three. Uh, but here you could see the general levy, um, as well as the two voter-approved, uh, bond levies. Really can't talk about the general fund, um, revenues without talking about sales tax. It is our single largest source of revenue for the general fund. Uh, just over twenty-six percent of all revenues are, come from sales tax. Um, you could see that in two thousand twenty-three, we're projecting fifteen point eight million dollars in, in sales tax. Um, you could see significant growth even throughout the pandemic. Um, I do have included a two thousand twenty adjusted number up on this slide. Um, that's really just an illustration of how wrong we were in terms of how the pandemic was going to impact the local economy. Um, we, you know, saw businesses, um, uh, employees, you know, go into lockdown. So we just assumed that all economic activity would come to a screeching halt, and it did not. Um, you know, we really saw a shift from, you know, folks that were leaving the city limits and going to work and spending money, and people were pretty much forced to shop locally because of all the restrictions that were out there. So, um, again, you're seeing quite the opposite of, I think, what many of us thought was going to happen last March or March of two thousand twenty. So I do want to, um, review the significant budget initiatives that are in your proposed budget for two thousand twenty-three. We do have three hundred thousand dollars in the budget for economic development, um, in, uh, investments. The council, of course, has a committed reserve for this very thing. Uh, we don't have anything specifically identified at this point for two thousand and twenty-three, uh, but we do want to have that holding place, just so we are, you know, very, uh, you know, able to be flexible and to, uh, react if some opportunity does arise. Um, to give you an example, some of the monies that are being spent this year, there was investments made at the, uh, Food Truck Plaza there by the, by the depot. Uh, there is two hundred thousand dollars in the proposed budget for, uh, Climate Action Plan implementations. I will point out that there will be an additional two hundred thousand, so a total of four hundred thousand in the two thousand twenty-three budget. Um, that will, uh, the additional two hundred thousand will be due to a budget amendment. We just have not spent those monies in two thousand twenty-two, and certainly want to put those dollars into action next year. We have in your proposed budget, uh, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars for the replacement of the Woodland Creek Park Bridge. It's the pedestrian bridge there at the, I guess that would be the east end of the park. We have three hundred thousand dollars in the budget for a police virtual trainer. Um, previous to, uh, the idea of purchasing our home, we were, uh, borrowing a trainer from the Chehalis Tribe. Um, turned out to be a very valuable tool, so we would like to continue that important program within law enforcement. And then we have the first year of a multi-year irrigation control upgrade project. So it's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in your proposed budget. This is a four-year project. It's going to total just over a half-million dollars over that four years. Really, this is a situation where we have an obsolete system. We're currently using radio waves to control all of our irrigation systems. Now, the, the trend is, or absolutely the trend is, to use cell communications to control those. So we're no longer able to get replacement parts for our current system, so we're going to start replacing that. Do want to talk about utilities capital. Within the water fund for two thousand twenty-three, we have a capital improvement program of almost nineteen million dollars. You could see a list of projects there. Some of the made, you know, the main project going into two thousand twenty-three is the Terry Cargill Reservoir. We have a, a number of pH treatment projects, and then a significant water line replacement project on Golf Club Road. Wastewater's capital improvement program for two thousand twenty-three is twelve-point-five million dollars. We are really focused on replacement or rehabilitation of lift stations. We also have, in conjunction with the water main replacement on Golf Club, the wastewater improvements in that same area. We, of course, take the approach of digging up the street once, so we coordinated these two projects. Stormwater's capital improvement budget is one-point-two million dollars. The more significant projects are purchase of land for the Rutter Road facility and a oil-water separator for Woodland Creek. In terms of kind of thinking big picture and long-term for our utilities, we're going to spend somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifteen million dollars over the next nine years or so through two thousand twenty-nine. So significant investments and replacements within our capital utilities. Do want to highlight the transportation benefit district projects. This, of course, is a voter-approved sales tax. So we're really putting the, the voters' money to, to work. I will point out that the two thousand twenty-three projects are in blue. I, I do apologize for the small size of the graphic, but we are focusing on South Lacey in terms of projects. You could see the various areas listed there. Overall, we're budgeted to spend seven-point-five million dollars in, in the overlay program. This is about twice as much as we've have done here historically. I also want to point out that we have a half-million dollars in this budget for sidewalk rehab. So if former deputy mayor Cynthia Pratt is out there listening, we're, we're getting to those sidewalks that she always advocated for. We are in our seventh year of the transportation benefit district. Do want to talk about other transportation projects? So these transportation projects here, coming in at nine-point-nine million dollars, primarily funded through gas tax, real estate excise tax. But pretty significant projects, really focusing in on, on College Street here in the near future. We, we do have some monies in place for transportation right-of-way acquisition. We don't have anything necessarily specifically identified. We just want to be able to have those, those dollars available in case those properties for future acquisition come available. Obviously, it's a much better situation. We have a willing seller, and of course, we'll be willing buyers for that future right-of-way. Do want to highlight what we have in our two thousand twenty-three budget in terms of replacement of vehicles. We also do have some new vehicles within the budget, but spending just under one-point-five, or one-point-four million dollars next year. I'll also point out that we are beginning the investment into electric vehicles. Of course, we have a Washington state mandate to convert electric vehicles, I think, by two thousand thirty-five. We don't want to wait until two thousand thirty-five to try to replace all those vehicles, so we're starting now. We have identified some reserves within our, our fleet budget to help kind of cover those price differences. So in terms of the difference in two thousand twenty-three between buying electric vehicles and combustion vehicles is just about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. I think it's around ten vehicles next year we're going to see in terms of EVs. I do want to highlight some projects that are in the two thousand twenty-two budget. I think these will, for the most part, carry over into two thousand twenty-three. At this point, they're not addressed in the proposed budget. We still have our fingers crossed that they'll occur in two thousand twenty-two, but due to supply chain issues and just a, a number of factors. But, you know, we do want to make sure we communicate that we are still committed to these projects. Of course, we have our, our police station project. The council just saw a presentation last week at the work session on the thirty percent design and the results of that, so we're going to be moving into the next phases of that project. We're currently in design for Grade Qyo Park Phase One A, so we will see some pretty significant developments, you know, for that first phase of the park. The regional athletic, athletic complex, the Rack, we do have a couple of projects. Well, actually, it's a related project, but we are going to expand the parking lot at the Rack. I think we thought we might build a, to break ground on that this year, but I, I doubt that's going to happen. And in conjunction with that, we have frontage improvements on silicone that's going to occur at the same time. And then we just have just a long list of supply chain workforce challenges, really across the board, utilities, transportation, facilities, rolling stock. You know, the city isn't any, any different than anyone else or any other businesses out there. It's just been a significant challenge, really globally. And really, this is my, you know, kind of my plea in, in terms of the public and the council. We're, we're going to be looking at a year that's going to be kind of a reset year for two thousand twenty-three. In a lot of cases, we're going to have staff doing, trying to do twice the work. So we're obviously committed to, to getting those projects done, but it's going to be a lot. In terms of, just take our fleet department as an example. We had about, I think, eleven replacements scheduled for this year. I think we have twelve, thirteen vehicles for next year. As of yesterday afternoon, we have only received one vehicle in two thousand twenty-two that's actually going to hit the streets. So that, for the most part, I think we're going to see two thousand twenty-two replacements get rolled over into two thousand twenty-three, which just means about twice the work next year. So we will have our, we will have our challenges again next year. I do want to highlight social services and our homelessness efforts. Like I said, you know, the overall budget appears to be decreasing, but that's, that's not the case at all in terms of our commitment to these important services. Of course, we have a rapid response cleanup team. This has made a significant difference in terms of how our community looks. So the, the estimate for next year is about two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for this team. We are continuing our support of the Regional Housing Council in terms of sales tax. So we have committed a half a percent of our sales tax to go to this function, so coming in about seventy-eight thousand dollars. The Regional Housing Council, we're also supporting this council through the Affordable and Supportive Housing Sales Tax. This is about a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. And then we're going to continue with our efforts and our partnership for the mobile outreach team. This is a partnership with Olympia Health, Health and Recovery Services, coming in at about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. So again, significant investments and, and support that's going out to this much-needed function. I do want to spend a couple moments talking about our six-year plan. We haven't really looked at this in a few years. And there's actually a question from the mayor during our revenue hearing about utility tax that kind of reminded me we should probably take a look at this. We have some newer council members that weren't a part of these multi-year discussions. And the council invested a significant amount of time at retreats back in the, you know, mid-teens, two thousand teens or so. So I, I thought it'd be nice to, to bring this back to the council and for the public. One, I think it's important because there are actionable items that we have, and in case the economy does take a downturn. So we, we do have some action items we could take to address that. But also, it's just a reminder of, of how far along we've come in terms of implementing some of the other action items. So the council really looked at action items within the financial plan, really kind of three different areas. The three areas being reserves, and, you know, the, the reserves that we built up and using those to balance the budget. The second category is looking at expenditures and, and service levels, and then revenue enhancements. And the, the council, although hasn't officially adopted this plan, that's kind of the order in which we looked at, at these action items, you know, use reserves first, that's what they're for. We establish those during the good times to use during those, you know, tough economic times or for one-time projects. And then the council wanted to look at expenditure levels, service levels, before asking the public for revenue enhancements or increases to any sort of taxes or fees. So I really wanted to look at revenue enhancements as a last resort, so to speak. So in terms of reserves, this is pretty much the list the council came up with in terms of, you know, what would be the focus in terms of supplementing revenues in those times where we had difficulties in balancing the budget. We did use the pension reserve, the limited-term employee program reserve, so those have been incorporated into the budget. Since that time, we've also been using strategic investment, as you saw from an earlier slide. We have been using police succession planning reserves. That is currently funding three police officers, actually, it's two officers and one sergeant. Within the two thousand twenty-three budget, as you saw from the city manager's presentation, we're also going to be adding two lieutenant positions that will be funded through this succession planning reserve. And then we have a budget policy reserve of three million dollars. This is a reserve that we have not used yet, but the two thousand twenty-three budget does include using about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of this reserve. In terms of expenditures, we did identify some, a, a couple of capital items to target first. So we, we have eliminated these from the budget. You know, historically, we use these two line items for unexpected capital issues. You know, we might have had an equipment failure that we needed to replace, so we wanted to have some flexibility within the budget. But probably more importantly, these two budget line items here funded future reserves for that capital replacement. But we did come to a point that we did eliminate those from the budget to balance the budget. And then revenue enhancements, we had a, you know, a series of action items. We've implemented three of those, indirect cost plans for the three utilities. Really, this is a recovery of overhead charges. So, you know, it's an acknowledgement that the general fund does support these three functions, and really, this is a way for us, for the general fund to be reimbursed for those services. And then we did briefly talk about the possibility of having a utility tax on cable TV. At the time, we did an estimate, and that was about eight hundred thousand dollars a year. And we also did talk about utility tax on the city-owned utilities, which is why I was reminded of that during the last hearing in the mayor's question. Did want to follow up with the mayor's question in terms of how much growth we've seen in utility tax on the city-owned utilities. Here is a ten-year history of just the utility tax on the city's three utilities, again, water, sewer, and stormwater. You could see back in two thousand and twelve, we collected just over one-point-four million dollars. Two thousand twenty-one actual collections were almost two-point-five million dollars. So we've actually seen pretty significant growth in this area. It's about six-point-five percent per year. Over this ten-year period, we averaged about two-point-six, two-point-seven percent population growth, which leaves about four percent for utility rate increases, which is, you know, just about where we have seen here in the last ten years. So we have, we have indeed seen growth. And, you know, I would argue that it has kept pace with inflation, as, as, that was one of the mayor's questions, was has this growth kept up with inflation? I, I think it has. But I, I do think it's a good idea to, to keep that, you know, as an option as we look forward in case we do have some challenges in terms of balancing our budget. It, it certainly is another action item for the council to consider in terms of, of that.
So even though the, the six percent that we're, we're charging has stayed flat, the collections of, of those utilities has gone up at the level we're seeing here, which is why, why the collections have increased, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. Between, between population growth, customer growth, and adopted rate increases. So, yeah, even though we have not changed our utility rate, utility tax rate in many, many, many years, we have indeed seen growth.
Because, because what we're collecting is six percent on the total utility tax collection, that's correct?
That's correct. So, you know, your question, Mr. Mayor, was, you know, what does a one percent increase look like? Or was a half a percent increase to that tax rate? You know, it's, it's somewhere in the four hundred thousand dollar range based on the two thousand twenty-one collections. So half a percent would, of course, be two hundred thousand.
Okay. And I, I'm, I'm still curious of, of, you know, I, thank you for this. I, I appreciate you showing us the graph, because we haven't seen this number. Hey, we, we talked about it, but we, we don't see the actual numbers, which is why I brought it up. I am curious of, of where we're at compared to other cities and what, what they do with a city-owned utility tax. You know, we, we've been flat at six percent. Is, is that six percent a normal for other cities our size? Or I, I would still like some information about that going forward, just to see where, you know, we're keeping up with, with the times.
Sure, we could certainly take a look at the AWC tax survey, I think was recently published. So we'll, we'll have a pretty good idea of what's happening statewide. I will say, you know, off the top of my head, I believe stormwater is at six percent, and I think Olympia is closer to twelve percent, but we'll certainly take a look at those, the survey results from AWC, and certainly could report back.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You bet. So I do want to highlight the changes to the budget, just so the council is aware. As I mentioned earlier, we did have a property tax projection decrease, three hundred and forty-five dollars, I think I said three fifty earlier. The changes to the property tax projection are coming from two areas. One is the refund levy, which is an addition. This is thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars. And then we have a, a decrease due to the, the most recent valuation, assessed valuation, coming from the, the county assessor. So we had a, a decrease, a slight decrease to the annexation valuation that's being added. But most of the decrease is coming from the new construction number, and that where, I think it was about two hundred and ten million dollars of addition, it's looking more like a hundred and ninety-five million dollars. That's, again, the, the bulk of that change. I do want to alert the council that we, we have a no net change really to the budget, but I do want you aware of some line item reductions and increases, again, netting to zero. We added the Parks Comprehensive Planner position at the very last moment. We were about to go to print on our proposed budget, and changing one number in the budget has a domino effect to that two-hundred-page document. So we chose to come in this fashion to the council and make that change when, when we had a little more time. But as you know, this is one of the positions that we're proposing to add to the budget for next year. Again, no net change. One of the more significant areas that we found in terms of reduction was the, the professional services and the part-time salaries related to the lifeguard program, as an example. We, well, I, to be honest, did not include ten thousand dollars for the tuition reimbursement program for employees, so that was just simply an oversight on my part. Very similar with-
I had a question about that.
Yeah, thank you. Good time.
The tuition reimbursement program is, I'm familiar with programs like that, and it's an- it's an excellent recruitment tool, it's an excellent retention tool, especially in a time when it may be difficult for certain areas of the city to recruit. And I wonder if $10,000 is sufficient. I believe that the cap on individual reimbursements for people who requested is 2,000, which means that if you had five requests, you'd exhaust the fund, and it's first come, first served, so I would propose we increase the amount of money in that tuition reimbursement program, since it's a very small amount of money and our budget is shrinking by 16, 16 million dollars.
Well, can you, can you give us a historical, how many people are taking advantage of this reimbursement program? Is $10,000 enough? Do we run out of these dollars?
Well, we don't have a lot of history, and that's why we really started with $10,000. So 2022 is actually the very first year of the program.
Oh.
I will, I will agree with your concern. I think that as, you know, we see this program into the future, I think it is going to grow. We've definitely seen employees take advantage of that, and of course, it's an investment in, in our workforce, so it's certainly to the benefit of the city as well. So I, you know, we can look at this kind of mid-year in terms of budget amendments, and, but we really don't have a whole lot of history within the program, but, yeah, we're well aware of the need.
If we don't increase the amount of money bucketed for it right now, I'd like, when it's communicated to staff, that staff are aware that we're going to be taking another look at this, so they shouldn't not ask, because even if the fund is capped out, we may look at being able to reimburse people beyond the 10,000 if we can add additional funds halfway through the year.
Yeah.
Okay, absolutely.
I absolutely agree with Councilmember Vasquez. I would like to take a look at this and make sure we do run out of funds, that we can possibly ask for a budget amendment halfway through the year, or whenever we run out of those funds.
Okay, we will definitely communicate that to our HR department to make sure that we don't have anyone think that there aren't funds available.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the last change is related to the legal services budget. Again, this was basically a mistake on my part in missing the, the amount, so I'd like to make that correction as well. Getting close to the end, I do want to, for the public's, for the public's benefit, I do want to make sure they're aware of other budget actions and-
Troy, I was, I was kind of hoping you were going to go through the property tax explanation again.
I have the slides, if you'd like to see them. So of course, tonight, we are conducting our first public hearing on the budget. Later in the agenda, we're hoping the council will take action on property tax for 2023, as well as utility tax rate increases. December 1st, we are scheduled for the final budget hearing, and then we have the budget adoption, which is scheduled for the December 15th. But just in closing, we are continuing, I believe, to meet the community expectations and the things that they've grown accustomed to. You know, we think about the economy, I think there's a lot of uncertainty. There is a planned economic slowdown because of workforce issues, inflation, geopolitical issues, supply issues, so there is a great deal of uncertainty out there, but we do have a budget that is balanced, maintains a level of services, has no reductions to any programs or any, any employees. So again, I think we're, we are going to continue to, to meet the expectations of our, of our citizens. This is a budget that continues to plan for the future, continues to invest in the future, so I think it's something to be proud of, and I'm certainly thankful. I think I say this every year, but it doesn't make it any less true, despite I say it every year. I do want to recognize the, you know, the leadership of the council and the city manager, certainly provide a lot of really good guidance in terms of fiscal policy as we move forward. So I think, you know, the position that we're in to maintain this budget is largely because of those actions, so certainly want to recognize those efforts. Certainly want to thank my, my colleagues in terms of directors and all of their staff for really being mindful of what we are looking at in terms of proposing for the budget. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the council, and again, we are looking for any direction the council may have in terms of changes to the budget, and of course, to accept any public comment that might be out there.
So let's first go to the public. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this budget? If there is, I will turn it over to Councilmember Greenstein to handle that. Is there anyone there, Councilmember Greenstein?
There's, there's no one here wishing to address their campaign.
Okay, then I'll turn it back over to our council. Is there anyone from the council wishing to add anything to this budget hearing?
I would just, just quickly say thank you, Troy. As always, I appreciate your, your budget process and the fact that the conservative nature of our staff and what we've done to be able to have the reserves, to be able to do things, the projects that we're doing, the police station as an example, without having to raise taxes. I think you guys have just done an amazing job of keeping this sitting in a good fiscal position, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Certainly a team effort.
I would certainly support what Councilmember Greenstein said about the great management of our finances, and I would add my two cents to the tuition reimbursement fund, keeping a good eye on that. I was somebody who benefited from that during, I was working for a newspaper, actually, before I graduated from college, and my father had been paying my way through college. He was a realtor, the recession hit, and I found out about Gannett Corporation's tuition reimbursement award, and that took the financial pressure off my dad, enabled me to get my degree while I was working, and so you never know, you know, whose life you're going to change with a program like this. So thank you.
I absolutely agree. I appreciate that we have that. We're actually at a National League of Cities Conference right now, several of us are, and one of the things that we're talking about back here is the new legislation that's happening, it's called the Helper Act, which will set up a low-interest home fund opportunity for our public servants, mostly our firefighters or police officers, EMTs, and K through 12, something that's being talked about right now, this legislation that's being discussed at the federal level. The National League of Cities has taken an interest in this, and we're trying to get to, we all know how hard it is, especially at the municipal level, to, to attract quality employees at our police level as well. You know, we're all struggling with that, so it's another thing that we're, we're looking at, and LC is focused on, so we, all this helps, and so we appreciate the city by things doing their part as well. Is there any other discussion? With that, I will close this public hearing, and we'll go on to our next agenda item. And our next agenda item is under proclamations. Council's ready for our first proclamation, which is our Native American Heritage Month. With that, let's get started with, hopefully with Councilmember Vasquez. You guys are ready?
I'm ready.
Great, I'll turn it over to you.
Whereas, since time immemorial, Native Americans, Alaska natives, Native Hawaiians, and Indigenous peoples have built vibrant and diverse cultures, safeguarding land, language, spirit, knowledge, and tradition across generations, and-
Whereas, Indigenous people have played a vital role in every stage of our nation's history, and their contributions have enhanced the social, political, environmental, and economic well-being of the United States of America and local communities like Lacey, and-
Whereas, we acknowledge the Indigenous people who called this land home before the arrival of settlers and have been here since time immemorial, and-
Whereas, the city would like to recognize that we are on the lands of the tribal people of Medicine Creek Treaty and other Indigenous communities, and acknowledge the history of disposition that allowed for the growth of our community, and-
Whereas, the city offers respect to the tribal people of the Medicine Creek Treaty and their elders, past, present, and emerging, as well as all Indigenous communities in Thurston County, Washington State, and across the nation, and-
Whereas, our community reaffirms its commitment to respect and preserve traditions and cultures, and to honor the unique heritage of our first inhabitants.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim the month of November, November 2022, as Native American Heritage Month in the City of Lacey. And I encourage all community members to commemorate this month with appropriate programs and activities, signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder. I'm going to turn it over to my good friend, Chairman of the Nasqually Tribe, Willie Frank. Willie?
Well, thank you guys very much. Dang, Mike, it's good to see you. I wish you were in person, but I haven't seen you in a long time. It's good to see everybody on the screen and everybody in person, our council members. And also, Scott, you know, I know this, is this your last meeting here? Not yet? Okay, well, I want to make sure, because we do have a gift, gift from Nasqually, just to thank Scott for, you know, his work and communication with the tribe over the years, and thank the whole city council. Thank you guys so much for, for this. This is huge, this means a lot. We're doing a lot of work with the, the local schools here, and so this just, you know, let's continue the great work between Lacey and Nasqually and all our tribes in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good seeing you, Willie.
We love you, we appreciate you, and thank you for coming to accept, accept this proclamation. You guys, you guys mean the world to us. Good, he's shaking their ones here.
They're scared to come up to our council. It's funny, they're scared to come up, and they don't want to talk when council's-
Good seeing you, Willie. So next up, our next proclamation is our Small Business Saturday proclamation. I'll just turn it back over to Councilmember Vasquez.
All right. Whereas, the City of Lacey celebrates and supports our local businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and-
Whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995, and-
Whereas, small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and-
Whereas, 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small business in their community on Small Business Saturday. 70% report the day makes them want to, makes them want to encourage others to shop small. Independently owned retailers, and 66% report that that day makes them want to shop small all year long, and-
Whereas, 58% of shoppers reported they shopped online with small businesses, and 54% reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or cafe on Small Business Saturday in 2021, and-
Whereas, the City of Lacey supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, and-
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, and a small business owner, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, hereby proclaim Saturday, November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Lacey. I encourage all residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on today's date. I think we have the executive director of the Lacey South Sound Chamber there.
Thank you, Councilman. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you, everyone, and it's a pleasure being here, both in person with you and online. And on behalf of all of the Lacey South Sound Chamber members, I would just like to say thank you very much for this proclamation and for your support of small business here in the South Sound area. I know all of our members are thrilled to be in business in Lacey and with the continued partnership that we have with this council and with the city, so thank you for this proclamation, and we appreciate it and continue to look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Great. Appreciate it, good seeing you. So next up on our agenda is under resolution, the Resolution 1120 that authorized the 2023 property tax increase. Troy?
Thank you again, Mayor Ryder. For your consideration tonight is a resolution that will authorize the 2022 to be collected in 2023 property tax increase. I think the council is well aware, there are state statutes that limit the amount of property tax increase per year, but as a reminder, and of course, to communicate to the public, that limit is 1% or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. There is a provision in state law that says that the governing body must take a separate action from the adoption of the property tax levy, so that's the purpose of this, is to make sure we follow that state law. In terms of what is in the proposed property tax for 2023 is a 1%. Our inflation number for, that is being used for that limiting factor is 6.457%, so a very historically high inflation rate. Of course, we're well aware of what's happening out there in the economy, but in terms of the amount that 1% generates, it is $80,466. So again, we are required to take this separate action, so it is a staff recommendation that the council adopt the resolution that will authorize the increase for next year. With that, I'll turn it back to the council for any questions.
For expediency's sake, I will, I will move that we adopt the resolution rate to the 2022 Ad-Blorum tax increase. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion, the nominee carries, we have adopted our Ad-Blorum tax increase, the 1% for next year. Let's go on to ordinances. First up is ordinance 1625, the 2023 property tax levy. You know what, Troy? Can we, can we take all, I'm going to take all of these as one motion. Can we just go through them all real quick?
So we'll start first with the 2023 property tax ordinance. Of course, we view these numbers pretty closely throughout the budget process. You could see the proposed levy for 2023 is just under $8.5 million. In terms of the change to the property tax levy, the total change is $446,640. We do have adjustments for the new construction, as I stated in the previous presentation, it's about $195 million of new construction, so we're continuing to see high levels of construction within the Lacey area. We have an annexation adjustment, which is going to generate about $181,000 increase. This is about a $206 million increased valuation. Of course, you have your 1% levy of $80,466, which you just took action on, and then the, this year's refund levy is $13,365. I showed this slide during the hearing, so I won't spend a lot of time here, but of course, we have the general levy, as well as the voter-approved bond property tax levies. Do want to show the impact to what a typical house in Lacey might experience in terms of property tax increase. So in looking at some various sources, appears that our average house valuation now is a half million, $500,000. appears that our average house valuation now is a half million, five hundred thousand dollars. Um, I did, we do have a change in the appreciation of, uh, of, of value. Um, we were at about thirty-four point four percent, I think we presented during revenue hearing. It's, uh, just about thirty-three percent, um, currently. So it, it did go down a little bit. Uh, but in terms of, um, the overall change, um, you could see here on the slide what a half million dollar house might experience, um, just about six dollars and fifty-one cents or so. So with that, let me, would you like to take questions, Mr. Mayor? Or would you like me just to go right to the utilities?
Uh, yeah, go through sixteen twenty-five through sixteen twenty-eight. I'll take questions at the end.
Okay, just have a few slides for the utility rate ordinances. Okay, so there are three ordinances for your consideration tonight. Um, one is for the water increase for two thousand and twenty-three. This is a one-year increase of, uh, five point two five percent being proposed, um, to the average residential customer. That would be a dollar sixty-three per month. Um, the five point two five percent comes directly from the draft Water Comprehensive Plan. Uh, this is a plan that is, I believe, on its way to the Department of Health for approval. And the council, um, will see that final plan sometime in two thousand and twenty-three as part of the annual comprehensive plan process. Uh, for sewer, it is a nine point five percent increase being proposed to the average residential customer. This is two dollars and forty cents. Um, we don't have a draft or an approved comp plan for wastewater at this point. Um, we're actually going to be developing that in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, but during the, um, conversations that the council had, um, last year, actually, it started in two thousand and twenty, um, as we were, you know, in the midst of the pandemic. And we did have our re-consultant develop a revenue requirement study, and this is the, uh, result of that study. And then the third and final is, uh, for the stormwater rate for two thousand and twenty-three. The proposal is four point five percent, which is equal to fifty-eight cents for the residential customer. Um, this is the rate that is included in the adopted stormwater comp plan. Um, we do want to share the impacts to, um, commercial and multifamily. Um, it, for water, it is, again, a s- across-the-board five point two five percent increase. Um, you could see in terms of group two, which is, uh, commercial and multifamily, um, exactly the same change that you're seeing in the residential, um, tiered rates. Um, here's the information for stormwater. You have, uh, residential as the first two categories, single family and duplex. Um, again, it's a, it's across-the-board four point five percent increase. And then, uh, the categories three through nine are, are resident, are, are commercial, um, um, accounts. Um, I don't have a slide for wastewater, but all sewer charges for commercial and multifamily are based on an equivalent residential unit. So it's just a factor of what the residential rate is. So again, nine point five percent. Um, we always like to look at, uh, comparison to our, our neighbors. Um, so here's a comparison of the two thousand and twenty-two rates. Um, very similar in terms of, uh, total sewer water and stormwater and lot bills. And then you have, the far right column is the proposed two thousand and twenty-three Lacey rates. So again, for your consideration night is, um, three ordinances. Water increase, five point two five percent, sewer, nine point five percent, stormwater, four point five percent. And I will turn it back over to the council for questions on both property tax and utilities.
Well, I will move that we adopt ordinance sixteen twenty-five related to twenty twenty-three property tax levy, sixteen twenty-six to twenty twenty-three water rates, sixteen twenty-seven to the twenty twenty-three wastewater rates, and sixteen twenty-eight to twenty twenty-three stormwater rates. Is there a second?
Second.
Given seconded, let's have some discussion. Any discussion?
I have one question. Troy, when you show the utility rates, that does not include, the, the comparison between us and the neighboring jurisdictions, that doesn't include the utility taxes, correct?
It does not, so.
Thank you.
What else? Um, I'm just curious, uh, when we look at the, since I, since I brought this up and you're, you're starting to give us more information on the multifamily and the commercial, um, and then breaking down into the residential, the, the four categories. How many, do we have a, do you have a numbers off the top of your head of how many people, how many of our residents fall into each one of those categories? Is, is it a small percentage of the people that are in the, you know, the two most expensive categories? Or how do we figure that out?
Um, well, it's really a seasonal, um, impact. So for residential, to get into those higher categories, that's almost completely irrigation. Um, so for the winter months, um, obviously, people use a lot less water in terms of residential use. Because residential, um, accounts typically don't have two separate meters, whereas businesses often do. Well, I'm not even sure how to get to that information. That's a really good, good question, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm, I'm curious, like, if, if it's mostly irrigation, and especially in those layer-two categories, so, but we know it's irrigation, yet we're charging them considerably more, even though it's not having the same direct impact on the entire system. Just kind of wondering how fair that is for, for the, for everyone there.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good philosophical question. So, um, when we look at residential rates versus commercial, um, when we look at our water system, unfortunately, we have to build the system to that peak use. So obviously, that happens during the hottest temperatures of the year, so the July, August, even September timeframe. So most of the demand and the peaking occurs during those months, which is driven primarily by residential. Um, that's where we see the biggest variances in terms of use between winter use and summertime use. And, you know, when we did adopt those conservation rates, you know, that was really the focus, was to try to bring down that peaking, uh, because that is obviously the most expensive water for us to produce. Um, so, you know, we could certainly look at that in the future. It's been quite a while since we've looked at that actual breakdown.
I'm, I'm curious. So it, by raising the rates, has it done the, the desired effect of, of lowering the, the usage during the summer or, or not?
I think there's, you know, I, I think it definitely has impacted, you know, certain customers. But as I ride my bike through neighborhoods to get to City Hall, there's a lot of green lawns. I, so they're clearly still watering their lawns. But, you know, that's, that's their choice, I suppose. That, that's why we have those rates. And if someone chooses to have a, you know, dark green lush lawn, that's, you know, it's going to cost more. But, um, you know, we've done a lot of different things in terms of odd-even watering, no watering on Fridays to help alleviate the problem as well. So I mean, it's a, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to tackle this problem from multiple different, um, angles.
Well, maybe we just, I, I'd like a little more data around that. You know, we, we've gone on for several years here, assuming our, our water rate structure is, is, is having the desired effect. But I'd like to see some data behind it as we, as we go forward. Um, you know, just curious. I think it's important, you know, for, for our rate payers to know that what we're, the rates that we've established are, are having the desired effect. So, um, you know, we can maybe look into that a little bit more. I would, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll see if we can do.
Yeah, maybe I can add to this discussion, too. There was a time when we were applying for our water rights that it wasn't necessarily just encouraged, but mandated that we had to have a tiered structure to address the issue of discretionary versus essential water. And so it's not so much, um, was this a policy? This is something to, if we're going to access limited water availability, we need to have some structure in place that recognizes what's essential, what's discretionary. And the tiered system was really the, I think, the preferred way ecology was communicating cities adopt that structure. I mean, maybe, maybe Scott.
I agree. We did that, we had to do that because we were forced to do that at the time. I'm just curious to see, since we were forced to do that, has it had any sort of desired effect? You know, I want, I want to see the data behind it as we go forward. I know, I know why we had to do it, but that was, you know, ten years ago. So, uh, I'm just curious to see if it's had a desired effect.
Well, I can say that it is successful and that, um, we have presented to the council all the information that you've asked in the past. However, I can tell you, you know, we meet monthly, have water conservation meetings to strategize on how to get the best conservation, how, you know, which big users to approach. But I can tell you that there are a couple of very large users, businesses. They just want a very lush park-like setting. So we've had discussions about coming to council, about even bumping those rates up more. You know, how do we get those folks to conserve? But, but yes, uh, most of the, you know, like HOAs and businesses, you know, they, they want to, um, be financially responsible and just apply, you know, right, correct amount of irrigation so that they're not being overcharged. But, um, you know, I, you know, we, we can bring more information. It'll probably be next summer before we'd be in a position to gather that with everything else that's going on. But I think our program is successful, and we'd even like to take it up another tier to be able to enforce that for, uh, somehow for the people that just don't care how much it costs and they're going to pay the bill. And, uh, I can tell you, uh, that, that there are, you know, we've looked at other cities and, you know, there's, in the news, you've probably read about how, uh, different celebrities have refused to comply with conservation. Therefore, cities have actually taken steps to go shut them off. You know, we'd hate to be in that position and take it that far. But what I can tell you is that, that these rate structures do work, but they don't work for everybody.
Well, thank you, Scott. I, I appreciate that. And I, I would love to see some of the data, uh, around this. And, um, I look forward to that. If it takes till next summer, that so be it. I would, uh, and, and if you have better suggestions on how we can conserve more, I think this council is open to that as well. So I just always like seeing the data, uh, behind some decisions that we're making. So I appreciate it. So there's a, a, a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of adopting ordinance sixteen twenty-five, sixteen twenty-six, sixteen twenty-seven, and sixteen twenty-eight, signify by raising your hand, saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. And let's go on to ordinance sixteen twenty-nine, adherence examiner review process for quasi-judicial land use permits. This is the big one. Rand?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, good evening, Council. Uh, tonight before you is, uh, a draft ordinance sixteen twenty-nine, which would update the, uh, uh, land use review process, yeah, under, for quasi-judicial, uh, land use applications, um, to, uh, make the hearing examiner's decision final, uh, in those, uh, situations and appealable to court through the Land Use Petition Act. So the, the hearing examiner's system was first authorized by state law back in the nineteen, nineteen seventies, um, very shortly after the first kind of enabling legislation, the Shoreline Management Act and the NCPO were adopted, when, at a time when cities were not required to adopt comprehensive plans, many did, um, or regulate, uh, land use through zoning. So it's a much different regulatory, uh, landscape back then. And at that time, uh, the state, uh, because there was no real clear, uh, uh, standardized ways of, of processing permits, uh, that there was no limitation on how many hearings the local government could have, who the, uh, decision bodies were, uh, whether decisions were final at the council level or not. So in, in that time period, uh, the process in Lacey was the hearing examiner held a public hearing, and then the recommendation would go to council, at which point the council could either, uh, adopt the recommendation, uh, take to ask questions of either the applicant, neighbors, or staff, or, um, hold their own public hearing and enter their own findings and conclusions. That, um, changed significantly in nineteen ninety-five when the state adopted the Regulatory Refund Act, which, uh, again, kind of standardized the, the processes for those cities planning under the Growth Management Act. Uh, the two key provisions that affected that, you know, previous hearing examiner process, um, were requirements that, uh, project decisions have to be based on development regulations and not just, uh, policies or goals of the comprehensive plan. You had to have a clear development regulation that addressed whatever condition, uh, were decisions being made. And, and this is the one that, um, kind of created the situation we have now with the process. Um, it limited the, the review process to a single open record hearing where the public could speak and a single closed record hearing, uh, where the evidence is reviewed, uh, by, uh, in this case, the City Council, under almost an appellate, uh, capacity. So, the, uh, so, so the council at that point could no longer, uh, collect its own, uh, information, ask for additional, uh, evidence or, or testimony. It really did just act in a kind of review capacity of the hearing examiner's recommendation. But the Appearance of Fairness Act still applied. It applied in the seventy-nine as well. Um, but it really didn't limit, uh, the council's ability to engage with the public or, or, uh, the whole community, because they could, uh, take evidence at the, as a council level and cure any potential, you know, appearance of fairness issues that, uh, might have, might have come up during the process. So we adopted our local regulations to, to reflect those, those changes. And, uh, currently, we're, we're in the situation where the hearing examiner makes a recommendation to the council, and the council, uh, can't, uh, discuss the matter with any of its constituents. It can't, uh, consider evidence, uh, outside the record created by the hearing examiner or, uh, uh, really do anything, uh, with the hearing examiner's decision other than determine that, uh, that recommendation is supported by substantial evidence and not contrary to the law. So it's a much different, uh, review standard, uh, much more limited review standard for the council. Um, so we've talked about this, uh, a number of times, uh, even before I got here. Uh, it was potentially making this change. Um, the council's direction was to explore an ordinance that would, uh, would make that change, uh, make the hearing examiner's decisions final, uh, appealable through the Land Use Petition Act. The advantages of, of, of going in that direction are that it separates the quasi-judicial and the legislative functions of the council. Uh, uh, land use permits and city councils are, I think, one of the very only areas where a policy body also acts as, as a judge in, in the judicial capacity. It also frees up, uh, uh, the council's policymakers to act on, uh, long-term planning and lawmaking functions even while, uh, the application is, is being reviewed. In the case of, uh, the Meridian Market, uh, application, the, one of the ones that, uh, had us reexamining this issue. Um, we've now, the department's now, um, starting a public participation program. We had a very, um, in my opinion, successful open house on Tuesday evening where we were able to engage the, the public on both, you know, why the decision, uh, and recommendations were made the way they were, but also, you know, now that that's done, what do you want to see out there? What we need to change to, 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 from a policy standpoint, um, to do better moving forward, uh, as far as community vision goes. It also protects the decision makers from, uh, from, basically, the public political pressure that, that goes along with, um, land use decisions, which are often, you know, very, very controversial and very, very, uh, uh, basic, very, very contested, I guess. And finally, um, uh, if you're not in the decision-making tree, then you can talk to your constituents about any land use application at any time during. your constituents about any land use application at any time during the process. The disadvantage, and I think we heard this through some of the recent, uh, hearing, hearings, uh, is that the, the public could perceive that there's a loss of control over land use actions, um, related to development. And, and I say perceive because I, I don't believe that's true because, uh, in reality, because the council is so limited in its, uh, decision-making authority to change an examiner's recommendation based on, you know, substantial evidence or, or contrary to the law. So, working with the, uh, our awesome city attorney's office, we combed the code, uh, found all those, uh, uh, places that, in the code and, and the ordinance does, uh, change a lot of, of chapters and sections within the code, um, found all those places where the hearing examiner's, uh, was mentioned as part of a recommendation process, prepared an ordinance that updates those. Thank you, Dave, for, for all, your team's hard work. And, uh, that is now before the council. Yeah. Of the three options, you know, we could, we could stay with the current system, we could, uh, have the hearing examiner make a final decision, but that then could be appealed to the city council or take the council completely out of the, the review process. The, the second option really, it doesn't accomplish anything other than, because you, the Appearance of Fairness would still apply, so you'd still be very limited in your ability to interact with the, with the public and our citizens during the land use process, even if there was no appeal until the appeal period, uh, passed. So, I don't know if, uh, uh, the city attorney wants to add anything and then we can take questions.
Dave, do you have anything to add to this?
Nothing to add, certainly available to answer any questions, um, or if council wanted a quick rundown of the amendments in the proposed ordinance, I'll defer to council on, on that.
Is there, uh, councilor Sedman?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so talking with our constituents out in the, in the, you know, our residents that elected us, none of them are in favor that I've spoke to, and there's been many that are in favor of the current process we're using right now. So, my vote's gonna be for anything other than what we have in place right now.
Is there, is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to make the motion to adopt ordinance number 1629, having to do with hearings examiner review process for quasi judicial land use permits.
Second.
It's moved in second. Have some discussion? Well, I'll jump in here. I don't think, uh, any of these options in, in front of us is going to achieve the desired results that our community is expecting from this council. What, what this action is doing, um, in my opinion, is, is passing the buck, um, because of the current law. Because our, our constituents believe that when it comes to, uh, a land use decision like this, that somehow the council can intervene and, and change, change it hap, you know, through the process. We cannot. It, it's become very apparent we cannot. Now, what we can do in some cases is, is find ways to tweak things a little bit to, to sort of compensate, looking at the, the, the land, you know, the decisions, you know, i- is there something that the, the hearing examiner didn't take into account? Um, that's the most we can do. Um, what I think this is gonna, what's gonna happen here is, uh, our staff is gonna be thrown under the bus time and time again because we can now speak to our constituents. Um, they're gonna be screaming and yelling. We can tell them, well, we're out of this land use decision, right? And it's gonna create a situation where it's gonna put increased pressure on our staff. Um, and they can't do anything to change it either. And so, I, I just want to warn this council for taking the easy way out and throwing our staff under the bus during the next controversial land use decision. It's gonna be really easy for us, for the, for the politics to in, enter into this. And I, I've been against this decision for the, for as long as I've been on council. I've been against this decision. What's changed my mind is how our council has reacted recently when it comes to this quasi judicial decisions. They either recuse themselves or put themselves in a situation where they couldn't vote on it because they've done something that, uh, is in, uh, direct, uh, against the Appearance of Fairness Act. That, in my mind, is unacceptable. They've elected us to, to make, be the final decision maker on this and if every time a difficult political decision comes before us, we just recuse ourselves or say, oh, sorry, I can't make a good, I'm, I'm, I can't make a good decision on this, um, then what's the point of having this ordinance, you know, in place?
Mr. Mayor, I totally agree with what you just stated.
So, it's been really frustrating to see, for us to get to this point, you know? But, here we are. Um, I don't, I, again, I want to warn this council, this isn't an opportunity for our next, the next controversial decision that happens for us just to bash, uh, former councils or ordinances on the books or how we got here. Uh, I hope we can take the time to interact with our constituents and say, hey, you know, this was a, this is what's been on the books, you know, let, let's tweak it going forward, but there's nothing we can do about your current circumstance. And I, and I, that's really important here.
Mr. Mayor?
Just once, yeah?
Just a suggestion. I know you can't see us, so I think after you're done, if you can go around the room and have everybody have an option, have time to speak, it'd be appreciated.
Well, and I'll do that now. I, I'll get, I'll, I'll stop my speaking. Actually, I'm, Lenny, I'm gonna turn it over to you, let you run the rest of this meeting because, uh, uh, of this decision, since you can see everyone, and I think, I think this council knows where I stand on this. I think it's unfortunate.
You've made it pretty clear.
Okay, I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Lenny.
I'll, I'll start here. Ed?
I have no other further comments on that.
Carolyn?
Well, I, I think it's, the, earlier this year, we've gone through two extremely difficult situations and it felt really paralyzing as a city council member not to be able to talk with the public and not to be able to vote our conscience because the law says you have to do this unless you can legally prove that the hearing examiner was incorrect. Uh, not, I think the mayor's correct, none of these is going to, um, I think, satisfy the public in terms of, of being, feeling like they can come to our, their city council and get justice on land use decisions, but I think the option before us tonight is the least bad of the choices that we have.
Mike?
Thanks, Lenny. Uh, thank you, Mayor, also. Um, you know, unless you live under a rock, um, you know, I lived in the neighborhood northeast Lacey when that whole gas station was going on. I live in Hicks Lake now with the whole apartment thing. Unless you live under a rock, the Appearance of Fairness makes everybody a violator, especially myself, just by living in a, in a certain area of town. Second of all, it's only throwing the staff under the bus to the resident that isn't educated. They need to, they have a responsibility to know their process too, you know? It's not, the responsibility's not all thrown on an elected official. Now, we try to do our best to explain to them the process and, and try to get them to understand it, but you can't do that when you can't talk to them. And that's frustrating too, and, and it's frustrating for everybody, not just the mayor or a council member or a resident, or a business owner, anybody, staff, you know? But you do have to understand the process and, and it's complicated and you'd, won't know that unless you get involved in your government. So, if anything's gonna happen in this process, it's gonna get people more involved in their government and that is a good thing. So, sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to upset you, but it, this is like so complicated. There's not an easy button to push on this. I just feel that the people have spoken, they want to have us be able to talk to them. If, if nothing else, even if it's just a feel-good, does nothing, at least they can talk to us and feel better about the process. Thank you.
Robin?
I'm not done with my first year on council yet, and it's been an interesting one. I'm not afraid of making difficult political decisions. And I want to say, and I think everyone on this council agrees with me, that the performance of our staff during some of these very contentious land use hearings has been superb. We have excellent staff. And if the residents of Lacey have concerns about the process or the decisions that are being made, that should come to us. It should not fall on the staff. I can't agree more. Um, I think this is a very good decision because the process is really unclear and I think that this helps to clarify it a little bit. There's no perfect option, but I think this is the better of the, the options that we have. And I think that we still have a lot of control over the way that we decide to assign zoning in our community. And we're gonna use the resources that we have to do more community outreach so that we can get that feedback sooner. As Grant mentioned, we're already in the process of doing that. So, I see this as a benefit to the long-term future of Lacey in terms of community engagement and clarity of process.
Deputy Mayor?
The quasi judicial process can be excruciating, um, because you, you know, you can, now you're, you can't talk to the people that voted for you, uh, or, or voted against you, doesn't matter, you can't talk to anybody, uh, and they're, they're writing you letters all day, every day, uh, and you have to sit there and act like, you know, you, you don't hear them. Uh, and you do hear them, uh, and if you should decide that, you know, you want to go out and take a look for yourself, you should decide, I want to know, you know, I'm gonna go walk that, I want to see what people are talking about, I want to, you know, be, you know, what they hired me to be, uh, then there's a penalty for that. And, and, and so, you know, you, you try to win, uh, but it just seems like, you know, the, the process in itself is, is stacked against you. So, you know, if you do your job, then you lose, and if you, you know, ignore the people and say, I can't talk to you about this, then you lose. Uh, and, you know, the, I've been trying to find a way to win. And I, you know, it's been to a couple, I, I still haven't found a way to win, and I always find a way to win. And so, uh, this thing has strapped me to, you know, harder than anything that I can think of or remember, um, to, you know, a, a, a losing position. And that's the part that, that frustrates me the most and that's why I want out of it. That's why I, and I don't, I, I don't see an option that, that will produce the kind of win that I am looking for. Thank you.
So, I don't have a lot to add that hasn't already been said. The bottom line is, I think we have three options that the state give us, all three of which are horribly bad. There is no good option here, in my opinion. The current situation i- is a serious concern to me, not being able to talk to our constituents when they're calling us, they're emailing us, they're coming to our council meeting, and we can't speak to them, doesn't feel right as an elected who is there to represent the people that, that elected us, right? So, I, the current situation just doesn't work well. My problem with this, with this proposal is, like the mayor said, I think it, it feels very much like we are shirking our responsibility. We're elected to make the tough decisions, whether we like them or not. Um, I agree with the mayor that we shouldn't be recusing ourselves because a decision's difficult. You should only recuse yourself if you have a true conflict, otherwise you need to stand there and take the vote. But I don't like the idea and I'm very uncomfortable with putting this on someone else. So, the, if the public isn't happy with the decision, they can speak to us all through the process, but we still have no, no control. We have nothing we can do or change. The real answer is we have to look at our zoning and make sure we have it right. That's the only way we avoid this, is to make sure before we get to this point, the zoning is how we want it and how we, how we all stand, would stand by it. Uh, and that's all I have to say on this.
So, uh, that, that brings me to a point that I missed when I, uh, just a minute ago, um, I, I did remember and liked when council member Greenside Stein said that, you know, the only way that we're gonna be able to effectively have, uh, the, the results that we're, we're really looking for is through the zoning process, which led me to want to ask Rick how, um, Tuesday night's event, uh, went. And I know that that's not on the, on the agenda tonight and, and, but, uh, you know, he actually had a, an opportunity to speak with the public about how they feel about the zoning on the remaining six or seven parcels that we have, uh, that, that, that are very similar to the one that we're discussing now.
Well, Tuesday night's event went really well. We had, um, approximately a hundred people show up for the open house. We've had over a couple hundred surveys and, um, I'm gonna let Grant speak a little bit more about some of the, the conversations that occurred there, but there was a, a discussion around, a little bit about the past process with the Meridian Market, but a lot of us now looking for, okay, what do we do? Uh, what are the things they want to see? What type of, um, you know, design or site, uh, design of buildings and site design aspects are, uh, they want to see as well? So, it was really the first start of that process and now we're condensing all that information and we'll be, um, briefing both the council and the planning commission more fully and then getting ready to go back and look at all options and go back out and have another conversation with the community in the, in the future date. And Grant, do you have any other things you'd like to add to that?
No, other than I thought it was, um, very successful and, and this, you know, this is the first look and first discussion, so our goal was, and, and Hans and Ryan did a great job of organizing this, this way, was to let people, you know, vent about, uh, Meridian Market. So, I got to stand by that particular board and answer all of any questions that I could, um, the process, try to educate as much as possible, but also lay the groundwork for the upcoming discussions about, okay, that's, that's what we know, that's not what, what we don't want. What does it look like moving forward? And is that the same for all the neighboring commercial zones? Could be different, you know? So, we were really trying to lay the groundwork for, uh, a healthy discussion, uh, moving forward. And my personal opinion is I think we've accomplished that, you know, it, we've set a, a good, successful, uh, process.
Grant, can I ask you a question about that? Was there any discussion about the process? So, I know that wasn't the focus, the idea was to talk about the actual zoning, but was there any discussion, any feedback? Did the public have strong feelings one way or another about the process as opposed to what we're talking about like tonight, for instance?
Well, we certainly, no, there was, I did, I didn't talk to anybody, I don't think Reese, uh, Fiant did either, Kewis the other, uh, person kind of, uh, uh, at the, the process boards and the, and the Meridian Market boards, but, um, mostly it was, uh, people asking if, if the decision is now done, if, you know, what happens next steps and what the, what we look at in the next steps. But I didn't really talk to anybody about, uh, you know, quasi judicial and who should be the decision maker.
Thank you. And in, in the current process, though, if someone did, so we made our decision as a council, there is, they can still take, I know this new one would go straight from there to court, but that is still an option in the current process as well, isn't it? Couldn't they take our decision to court?
Yes.
Yes? Thank you. Mike?
Thanks, Lenny. My only other thing was, you know, I, I had called for a temporary moratorium or whatever till we addressed this, but between then and now, has there been any other permits dropped? I don't think there has, and if there hasn't, um, we dodged a bullet because we, we could be revisiting this again, which would be like the third or fourth time and it would just, you know? I think we've been through enough, um, as a community.
And, no, there, there hasn't been any applications submitted for neighbor commercial development, um, and as we know, there are a couple, uh, undeveloped parcels out in the northeast area. And one of the things that, uh, you know, we are starting that process of the neighbor commercial conversation, but we couldn't start that process until after the quasi judicial process is over because of the involvement of the policymakers. But we could have started that earlier in that process, um, if council wasn't involved and you could have those conversations right away. But we could have started that earlier in that process, um, if council wasn't involved and you could have those conversations right away.
Mayor?
Yeah, so, um, you know, as I was reading through this and, and considering it and thinking about, you know, how do we, you know, pivot from where we are to where we want to be? One of the things that I was, I was kind of hoping for is that we, you know, didn't really take an action on this until we, um, you know, kind of got more results from Rick and his team and, and, and kind of got that feel from the community, you know, how, how we really want to, you know, you know, look at the zoning for these, these remaining parcels. And, and so, you know, we don't, I don't know, I, I kind of wanted to see a path laid forward for, for the, the eventuality of, you know, a, a hearing examiner's, uh, recommendation that, that I won't say wasn't favorable, but, but was going to get a lot of pushback and disagreement, uh, so that we would have those things in place prior to making this move, so that when something does happen, there's a clear, actionable direction for not only the us, but for the public. Um, so that, you know, we didn't just pivot and say, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll fill, we'll backfill the rest of it with plan and procedure that can, can, you know, uh, nullify the, this decision. We don't, we, first of all, we don't have a lot of public input just yet, uh, but at the same time, you know, what is the process? We haven't talked about the process for, for, you know, uh, if we did get a hearing examiner report that, that was disagreeable. And so that, that's why I, I didn't want to see this yet and wasn't really ready to take act just yet because it kind of seems premature.
We're, we're kind of mixing two different things right now. We're talking about the, the ordinance or the, uh, the role of the hearing examiner in the council and the quasi judicial process. The neighbor commercial conversation is entirely different. It's now on a policy level conversation. And so the, um, it's looking at the particular neighborhood commercial zoning designations, looking at what are the expectations in those particular neighborhoods, and that will go on its different track. And that could take, take up to, uh, you know, going through the, the whole, um, planning commission process and ultimately council over through this next year.
They're clearly symbiotic.
Well, but, but quasi judicial decisions aren't only related to neighborhood commercial zones. It's, it's related to any type of land use piece, whether it's a subdivision, a commercial site plan review, all these different things, and all of them have those different types of, uh, controversy that can be associated with land use. And all of them could have these, this, this challenge of the appearance of fairness doctrine and, and the, the community or citizens not being able to talk to council, council being in these particular situations. So it's not, this is not just limited to neighborhood commercial zones. Um, and, and of course, that is creates that challenge, and the dilemma that I think council is experiencing is not being able to speak to constituents. There's confusion on the process because constituents want to speak to their council, but there's a specific technical review process that has a lot of, um, case law and, and land use law behind it. And so there's a lot of complexity there. Um, and, and again, trying to navigate that, and some of the conversation, not the open house, but some of the conversations I've heard through this whole process was frustrating the community couldn't talk to their, to their elected officials. More so than the actual change of the decision and such. So I just want to make sure that's clear that this action tonight, while is, is, uh, revisited as a result of that experience, it goes through the quasi judicial process, both in neighbor commercial and the multifamily project in Hicksey, they're not related. They're two separate issues.
Mike?
So I, I think it's in the zoning name itself. It's the neighborhood part. It's the not in my backyard. That's when people are going to get fired up, you know? Um, if it's across town, they can't see it, whatever, but when it's in their backyard, they can see it. It's, they drive by it every single day, going home or going to work. That's where you're going to get the rub for the most part. So I think we're going to, this is going to be the most controversial, this neighborhood commercial. Um, I mean, it's right in the name.
So I, I, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll take this action. Thank you, Councilmember Greenstein, for going through that. Um, I'll, I'll reiterate, I don't think the action that we're going to take today is going to change the ultimate outcome of what our community thinks this council is responsible for, which is sort of pre-guessing if we got the zoning right, right? And so I, I, I think there's still a lot of work that needs to be done from this council to make sure where we keep up on our zoning, to make, we're, we're constantly looking at it to see, especially how much we've grown as a community, to make sure what we have in our, each of our zones is still compatible to the way our community looks like today. I, I, you know, I do feel like we are passing the buck here a little bit, but it's, I guess it's, it's where we're, it's where we end up at. Because I think the next time there's something controversial and there's a, a council room full of people, and they talk to us, and we go, yeah, we can talk to you all day long, but we can't change it. I think they'll be even more upset that we are not involved at all in the process as it's going through the process. So it's, it's a lose-lose proposition. I get it. Um, but it's where, it's where we're at. And so there is a motion on the floor. Um, it's been motion moved the second to adopt ordinance 1629, the hearing examiner review process for quasi judicial land use permits. All in favor of that motion? Please raise your hand and say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Clarify.
The city attorney had something to clarify?
Just clarify the ayes with the hand raised.
Yeah, who are the ayes?
It was moved in second, didn't it?
Yeah.
Three ayes, correct?
Myself, Robin, and who else? Carolyn?
Yes.
Do the nays have, is there four nays?
There are four nays, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Wow. So that motion, which is telling me, what?
The motion fails.
Motion fails, which is telling me the next step of this process is to have a big outreach to the public.
Yeah.
To explain where we're at, right? And have more of an input back from the public on what direction this needs to go. Um, I think it tells you something here, why there is four noes, because I, there is no easy way going forward on this. And so, uh, what I, I agree with the deputy mayor, it's like, we need to do more public outreach on this. Uh, this is one of those most, when people are, you're dealing with something this controversial, we really need to explain to the public where we stand. And so I would encourage, uh, us to go out and do it, an in-depth public engagement process on this, to explain why this didn't pass tonight. And maybe this will come before us after we go out and talk to the public and explain, here are the two options. Um, maybe though this will change in the future. I will definitely feel more comfortable after a long public engagement, you know, to explain to the public, um, the process and, and where we're at on this. And, you know, maybe this will come before us council in the future, but I feel like we've skipped a step here. Um, and then really, really engage the public on this issue. So I, I hope we do that next.
Mr. Mayor, the city manager, I think, has something to say.
So Mayor and Council, would it be helpful to maybe have another discussion about this at the, maybe at a future work session? I mean, we have had multiple discussions about what the quasi judicial process is. And I heard a couple of times during the discussion tonight was that it's our decision, and I think we've talked about this too. You do set the zoning, and then at a deeper level, you're setting the uses within that zoning. And so unless the hearing examiner completely gets that wrong, the decision for council is more just reaffirming the hearing examiner's decision. And so I don't think this process would take a decision away from council. It's understanding that there's professional staff in place, a hearing examiner that has a very in-depth knowledge of a code. If council is concerned about someone getting it wrong, you still have the ability as council, if you approve this, to appeal to court to enforce what your vision was of zoning or the uses.
So I agree with all of that, Scott. The difference, what I'm saying is the public doesn't understand. And we haven't, at this point, properly, in my opinion, explained it to them. What, what we just did was just said, you know what? We're getting out of the process all, because I, in, in theory, I agree with you. In theory, this entire council, I think, agrees with you, Scott. What we need to do is a better job of explaining to the public of what our role is, our limited role is. Because what I feel like we just tried to do was just get out of the process to get us out of the controversy without explaining to the public why we're in this position to begin with. And once we go through a proper process to explain that, I think the public will agree, okay, council doesn't have the same role as they think they, we do. And once we explain that to them, I'm, I'm more than happy to have this vote again. But all I feel like we just did is gone through a couple very controversial quasi judicial decisions, and we think the easiest way to get out is just to pass the buck and, 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 and have the council not make any decision whatsoever in it. I don't think, I don't think we should just skip right to that step.
It's, but Mr. Mayor, in all those meetings, what I heard was, I want to be able to talk to my council member. That's what I heard, and that's why I voted that way. Not because I'm afraid of somebody being mad at me for, you know, not being a part of it or whatever, even though I live there. I read a thousand emails on it. People approached me every day because I was in those neighborhoods. There's no way possible I could be not in appearance of fairness, so.
I agree.
That's just me personally, but they, and the, the end result was they want to hear and talk to them.
So let's go through the proper public process and let's get to another vote at some point. Uh, Grant, do you have something real quick?
Um, just I would, I would, um, say that staff, um, has done everything we can to, uh, clarify what quasi judicial means, um, what, how it impacts the decisions and why people can't talk to the, to the council during that process. We've done an extensive amount of outreach through all the permit applications, including webinars, you know, going back, uh, to last summer, kind of going over that process and why it is what it is. And on the website now, there's, there's a very detailed, um, uh, discussion of what the appearance fairness is, uh, what it means and why it was initially established, which is to make sure that, you know, basically developers didn't unduly influence the process. And a video explaining that as well. So I just wanted to put that out there that from the staff side, we have done everything we can to, to educate people about the process and why, how it came about and what it is.
I recognize that staff has done a ton of work to bring this ordinance before us today, and I really appreciate that.
Rick?
And just to reiterate on that, um, request to go out to a public, uh, process engagement. We, as, as Grant just articulated, we have, um, provided that information out to the public, explained the process. Also during the, um, um, land use applications that are active. And a lot of the feedback is, because there's emotions there, is our staff has been accused of lying to individuals, those type of things, because they cannot talk to their elected officials in a process. They don't understand that, especially with the emotions flying. So going back out to a public effort to get engagement and feedback, it's very technical information. One, they've got to have motivation to want to weigh in on that decision, because we do have struggles of trying to get out public outreach for things that aren't pressing issues for individuals. But also that takes a huge effort, and, uh, it'll probably take some time to look at what that strategy would look like, especially now going forward with our, um, getting ready for our 2025, 2025 updates, as well as our current engagement process we have in neighbor commercial. But I just want to say that, that this is something that is, is the request to go back out and do the community dialogue is going to be, um, very challenging, difficult to do anytime soon with the resources that we currently have and the priorities we currently have to act for council.
Well, one, one thing you can do is refer them to this council meeting. Let's, let's have, let's have this on, let's have this readily available for the public to understand, so they understand how difficult this decision was and, and where we're trying to come from.
And, and, and council meetings are, are open to the record, and they'll be on the website, and people will be able to view all the, all the public meetings, all the different efforts we do.
And the motion failed. It's okay. Let's just move on.
I, I'd like for us to take a beat before we ask staff to undertake something really intensive on this. I, I think what Rick is saying is really valid about how complicated this is, how many people realistically are going to be interested in it to even come out to an event like that. Um, I think we just need to think about that and what our messages would be. I mean, I've been on this council now for almost five years, and it's hard for me to wrap my brain around these land use decisions. I, you know, and totally frustrating for the public. So if we could, maybe at our next work session, take, set aside a few minutes, and let's talk this through before we ask staff to undertake what I think is probably going to be a futile effort. Not that I don't believe in being transparent with the public and giving them every opportunity to weigh in on this, but I just, I think what you're asking is, is more than carrying a boulder uphill. I think it's going to be, you know, a waste of time and resource.
I, I would have to agree with you, Carolyn, on that, because it is going to be next to impossible to get true public input on this topic. We're just not going to get the engagement. As we've seen, we get engagement only when something directly affects someone. Um, otherwise it'll be very difficult to get engagement on this, I think.
Okay, well then let's move on to our next agenda item.
Thank you very much, council.
It's, uh, next, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We have a, an award before you for the Carpenter Road improvements. Scott, your public constructor, is going to provide the briefing on that subject.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'll make this really brief. I have a total of four slides. The fourth one is the question slide. So, uh, staff respectfully request that you approve contract number PW 2022-36 for the 2022 Carpenter Road Improvement Projects to Miles Resources for $3,355,568.97. The engineer's estimate was about 3.4 million, so the estimate and the little bid were within about 1% of each other. There are 12 bidders on the project, which is great to see that many. That means there's more competition. There will be 100, 100 working days, uh, in the, in the contract. And work is expected to start spring of 2023. So just by way of location, uh, you can see there that this is on Carpenter Road. It starts at Karen Fraser Woodland Trail and proceeds south around the bend by the, uh, North Thurston Bus Barn. Uh, you hang right there and head south on Carpenter, so as the red line shows. This is both a paving project and a waterline project, more so a waterline project than a paving project. The waterline portion is, uh, nearly two-thirds of this. If you recall, we initially intended to put this project out with our overlay project this summer. Yet, uh, we received information that there were supply chain issues and this pipe wouldn't be available for over six months. So there was no point in us putting it out to bid at that time. Uh, and we just pushed the work into the winter window. So we're putting it out now. Uh, that will allow the contractor time to acquire the pipe and, you know, start work this spring, and they'll be paving next summer. In terms of costs and inflation, uh, if you take a look at this slide here, uh, there, it shows a comparison in unit cost of pipe uh, between our current project and the project we put out in 2021. So, uh, six-inch pipe, the unit cost on this project is $118 a foot. It was $26 a foot last year. Um, these are very small quantities, uh, here. Um, eight-inch waterline, you can see it's $125 a foot now, 48 last year. Uh, you're starting to get into larger quantities in the 12-inch. Uh, the difference between $80 a foot last year and $123 a foot now is, you know, 50% increase. And the majority of this pipe, you can see there's 3,300 feet of, of 16-inch pipe and, and some 18-inch, which there were none in last year's project. So that is just a tale about the inflation we're facing right now, at least related to pipe. I can tell you that the asphalt costs actually came in lower than they did during the, for the overlay project we put in, uh, that we built this summer. So it was about $104 a ton for So, it was about $104 a ton for this project versus about $119 a ton for our 2022 overlay project. And, there again, this, they won't be paving this out till next summer, so I assume that the asphalt companies anticipate that their, their oil prices will be going down. So, with that said, just, just a reminder, yeah, this was delayed, we're still in place, we're still facing inflation, and we still have challenges with supply line issues. Hopefully, that will get better, but we need to get the work done, we can't just put everything on hold. So, with that said, if you have any questions, I'd be more happy to answer them.
I would make a motion to award Lacey contract number PW 2022-36 to low bidder, Miles Resources LLC from Puyallup, Washington, in the bid amount of $3,355,568.97.
Second. It's been moved in second, Ed, to award the contract PW 2022-36 to low bidder. Is there any discussion?
Scott, I noticed that the, the engineer's estimates are getting closer, you know, as we get further away from, from where we were last year, the, the numbers are starting to get a little bit closer to the engineer's estimates. Would you, would you agree with that?
Yeah, we're on a, we're on a good run. Combining Ouija board logic with the crystal balls really helped, but, no, sorry. No, the engineers have been doing an excellent job in terms of their forecasts.
So, when is this project going to start breaking ground?
You know, they could actually, well, they, they have 100 days to complete the work, but our specifications won't allow them to pave until next summer, it goes by the North Thurston Bus Barn.
Right.
And, you know, seasonally, so they most likely won't start until next spring.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that was my question regarding.
They won't have far to go.
Sorry, that's not, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Stedman. No, it was just my question, you know, with, with the navigation, the bus barn and, and all that construction going on. Okay, so summertime.
Summertime.
Yeah, great.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved in second, all in the favor, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to oppose? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go on to boards commission community reports. I'm up first, I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor?
I do not have a report.
Councilmember Cox?
I have two reports. The first one is from LOT, the sewer authority. And the biggest item from that is that we agreed to declare a surplus property on Rixie Road in unincorporated Thurston County. It's along the Deschutes River. This land was purchased in 2008 for $665,000, and it was proposed to be used as a water, reclaimed water infiltration site. And what that means is, it's a process that involves injecting highly treated wastewater into groundwater to help sustain our, our water supplies. Over time, the LOT staff discovered that this site could support only about half of the amount of infiltration that had been projected, and it could cause damage to residential crawl spaces by causing water to surface in the area. The good news is that the State Department of Fish and Wildlife has an interest in buying this property as a potential site for a fish hatchery, and the Squawson Island Tribe has a very strong interest in seeing a hatchery developed along the Deschutes in this area. In the meantime, LOT staff had undertaken master planning that includes alternatives that would lessen the need for multiple infiltration sites. So, we expect that transaction to go through, and the purchase price is not exactly final yet, but I think it should be about double what LOT paid for it. Other items from that meeting were fairly routine. We agreed to change the format for preparing financial statements from what is called generally accepted accounting principles, or accrual method of reporting to a cash-based account, accounting reporting. Cash basis financial statements use fewer resources to prepare and are easier for rate papers, rate payers to understand when trying to determine the financial health of the utility. And our very own Troy actually said that it's a good thing. I wanted to make sure before I voted yes for it. We held a public hearing and later approved declaring some equipment surplus. We celebrated, and it was really nice, the completion of a new collective bargaining agreement with union representatives, complete with cupcakes. And we, we are planning a farewell for Executive Director Mike Strube, who is retiring in December, and I think will probably, his last day and Scott's last day will probably be the one and the same. So, that was LOT, and Regional Housing Council also met on November 9th. The item that took the largest amount of time and interest in the meeting was a proposal by Olympia Mutual Aid Partners, also known as OLIMAP, for a three to six month pilot project that's aimed at identifying and reducing harm from fire, smoke, and hazardous burning at homeless encampments in Thurston County. OLIMAP is an organization that provides outreach support to homeless campers, and they note that the issues related to unsafe warming and cooking practices and the burning of hazardous materials are the result of inadequate access to basic resources or safer alternatives. I mean, people are in the cold, they're going to try to get warm, basically. And unfortunately, this, you know, burning poses a danger not only from fires, but hazardous air quality to people living in the camps as well as the surrounding area. I mean, it's a public health issue. So, this pilot program would provide, in consultation with the Olympic Clean Air, Region Clean Air Agency, provide communication to try to help educate the homeless community about this. It would do an assessment of basic needs and problem solving with residents and stakeholders about concerns and problems associated with warming and cooking practices, and they would provide connections to safer warming and cooking alternatives, including blankets, sleeping bags, warm clothing, fire extinguishers, tent safe heaters, safer fuel sources such as propane, camp stoves, battery powered lighting, and water, and water purifying methods that don't require fire. There, there are a few others, but it's an exhaustive list. The projected project, they are estimating a budget of a little over $31,000 for three months and $62,000 for six months. So, this cost would be shared by jurisdictions throughout Thurston County, and so I expect we will be asked to contribute some proportionate part of that. We also received updates on finalizing the Regional Housing Council's new governance agreement, and the process for distributing federal and state housing funds in 2023, as well as an update on the purchase of the Days Inn Motel to serve as an enhanced homeless shelter. And finally, I'll put Scott on the spot again, we thanked City Manager Scott Spence for his many contributions to the formation and progress of the Regional Housing Council. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein?
I have two quick reports tonight. TCOM 911 met on the 9th of November. Really just want to give you a quick update on the radio project. It is still moving along, but at an extremely painfully slow pace. A lot of that having to do with something we've heard several times in other presentations today with supply chain issues, so getting the radios and such. Anyway, they are moving along, and it's, it's still anticipated it'll be done first quarter of 2024. Other than that, from that meeting, we did pass our budget for 2023, was unanimously approved. And then EMS Medic 1 met on the 16th. Biggest, most important news there was, we filled the open position, we've had an open position for a basic life support manager, which is one of the two directors who report to the executive director. That position's been open for quite some time, we finally filled that position, so that's, that's going to be a big help to our staff there. And the only other thing is, again, back to the issue of supply chain, we need, we need some new medic vehicles, and they put in the order, so you had to put in your order to only in several weeks find out how many of that order you're actually going to receive. So, they ordered five, hoping to get somewhere between one and five, having no real idea how many it'll be in the end. And the wait for those units is about 16 months, once they get the approval. So, it's, again, supply chain issues, and that, that is my report.
Councilmember Stedman?
I have no report, I just wanted to, you know, you did a moment of silence for past Mayor Clarkson, and, you know, the only thing I, I thought was left out was, he was a veteran, Army veteran and Marine Corps veteran, brother of mine, you know, with Veterans Day and Marine Corps Birthday just last week, very fitting, but, you know, Lenny nominated him, and we took action, named the senior center after him, and, or the community center, the senior center, sorry, sorry. And it's fitting, because if any of us in our tenure can do one-tenth of what that man did in his life, I would say that we were successful leaders, so. Anyways, thanks for taking a moment, and, you know, he, he's gone, now my attention shifts to Barbara, she's also a great person, and I reached out to her, and I said if she needs anything, this council will definitely be there for her, so, thanks.
Well, thank you for that. You know, it's, we've all, anyone that met Virgil, had the honor to serve with him, know him, count him as a friend, knows that our lives have been made, been made, made better for it. So, it's been a tough week for the community, it's a tough week for this council, a tough week for the city. But our hearts go out to Barbara, and, you know, I thank her so much for all the years she gave to allow Virgil to, to give back to this community, and all the years she's going to give back to this community as well.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing, they set a date, correct? January 7th at, I think it's 11:00 AM at the?
Lenny?
That is correct, it's the 7th, January 7th at 11:00 AM.
That's right.
First Methodist Church, right, Olympia?
It's at First United Methodist, yeah, and that is in Olympia.
Okay, well, with that, I do want to make a remark that, you know, my, now 13 years I've, I've gone on this, been on this council, I can only count maybe a handful of times a, a motion has failed like it did today. I hope that shows how, how difficult of a decision this council just had, and how hard of a, of a process that we are under, under state law. And so, I, I appreciate, I know staff is probably disappointed about the decision that was made today, because I, I do think in some ways it would have made things easier, on other ways, I think it would have made it harder on staff, but I, I think this will be an ongoing conversation that we, we have, not only on this council vote with our community, about this process of, of our land use decisions, and I think it's been made pretty apparent that I think the best thing we can do is make sure we get it right from the get-go, so we don't have these controversial decisions that come before us, that everyone agrees that the zoning has been done right. But with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep?
You have two additional council members that you haven't gone to for a report yet.
Oh, really?
Yes, Kunkel and Vasquez have not.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't see it on the rest of my agenda, so councilmember Kunkel?
Lucky for you, I have no report.
How about councilmember Vasquez?
Two quick things, there was the grand opening ceremony for the intercity transit building on Patterson, I attended that, it was lovely, that building is really cool. I think it'll be great for the staff and the public that enters that building, for that to be open and operational. The Olympic Regional Clean Air Agency is requesting time on a future work session agenda for the Lacey City Council, so they can come talk to us about some of the amendments they're going to make to rules somewhat related to what Carolyn mentioned earlier, residential burning. So, they wanted to come in partnership with Chief Brooks from Lacey Fire to talk to us a little bit about what those intended changes are going to look like and what they'll mean for us. I was not able to attend the TRPC planning, TRPC meeting, Malcolm may have attended in my stead, but I have nothing to report there. And then, for the last county Board of Health meeting, we identify the officers, so County Commissioner Time Answer is going to be the chair of the Board of Health, and Maria Williams, who's one of the community appointed members, is going to be the vice chair. And we're going to talk about priorities and budget recommendations over the course of the next couple of meetings. That's my report.
Well, now we've reached the end of our agenda, so I appreciate, I appreciate this council and the discussion that we had today. No objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned, and from Kansas City, keep it classy, Lacey. Bye.